Good evening. I would like to call July eighth, Monday, July eighth, meeting till four. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations?
Good evening, good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on an agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name and I live at address, and I would like to speak on for or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Matthew. At this time, we will have the invocation by Pastor Lee.
Let's bow our heads. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to administrate over the business of our city. We ask God that you would guard our hearts and our minds, help us to work towards unity so that we can benefit all the residents of the city of South Bend. And we ask God that you will help our city to be a safe city, a prospering city, and a blessed city. All of these things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance here in the land of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, made in the physicality of the Lord. Thank you, may be seated. Clerk Toronto, would you call the role, please?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Niskoski is accused. Councilmember Good Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. A council member's present.
Thank you. At this time, we have the report for Subcommittee on Minutes, Clerk Toronto.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you.
Motion to approve June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and the July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. This recommendation for approval is made recognizing that three current members of the council were not seated in twenty-twenty-three, and as such, will be abstaining from any formal approval of old minutes.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Staying.
The motion's carried. Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Well, no, we have some special business here. Yes. Um, I don't know, are there anyone from Saint Joseph High School girls tennis team? If not, we would recognize them at a later date. We want to give them a public proclamation for their championship for the Indiana High School Athletic Association. So, we will make sure that they are invited at our next council meeting or when they are available to be here. So, want to publicly congratulate them and reach out to them again. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session, and this is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill twenty-nine dash twenty-four a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at eight thirty Lear Street, Councilman district number three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Right, is there a committee report?
Yes. The, no, that's the property works. The zoning organization brought this to our council, and there's no recommendation at this time. That's correct.
All right, petitioner, present, we ask you state your name and address and give us key points of the presentation of the bill that we're getting ready to hear.
Skip Morrell, zoning specialist with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. This bill corresponds with the property located eighteen-thirty Lear Street. The owner is Katiki S. Lipscomb, and they're requesting a special exception to allow a restaurant in an urban flex zone district. The intended project is to establish a neighborhood sandwich shop at this site. So, this is kind of a view of the site as it exists now. This building, and then this is a view from the side. So, this building was designed and has historically been utilized as a corner retail and service space. As you can see here for some more context as well, this is, this building is located on a commercial node. You can see it's in that, in that white circle there. So, there's several retail and commercial spaces in that node. It's also located just a few blocks east of the Miami Street corridor there. So, this proposed use as a small-scale restaurant, it's consistent with the surrounding traditional neighborhood developments. You can see this kind of dense traditional neighborhood sort of set up there and will serve to enhance the area. Ultimately, the introduction of a restaurant at this site will activate the building and enhance the neighborhood by offering a new local amenity. And this comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation.
All right. House members, do you have any question regarding this bill? If not, I will now go to the public hearing.
I believe we have the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so, so, so sorry. Petitioner, if you're here, please come up.
How you doing? Jermaine Bennett, thirty-four, forty-three, South Main Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Okay. Any comments that you'd like to give us regarding?
I'm the owner of the restaurant that's going to be in the building, and I'm trying to improve the area. I did a lot of work already, replacing the windows and everything, and I'm trying to get it up and going and help the community.
What type of sandwich shop is it gonna be?
Just sandwiches.
I mean, cold and hot?
Cold and hot, both.
I live over there, so I'll be coming. So, that's my district, so I'll be coming to check you out. Okay.
Both.
Okay. Nice.
Thanks.
Any other, any, any other comments? If not, I'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone, Clerk Toronto, wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-nine dash twenty-four? Would you please state your name and address?
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box ten-two-oh-five, South Bend, Indiana. So, I actually own a house in the thirteen-hundred block, real close to this place. And I think it'd be great to have a sandwich shop in the neighborhood instead of having a biker hangout because that's what was in there and created a hell of a lot of problems for that area. And I have grandchildren that play there in the yards out front. So, I'd like to see something a little better than a biker hangout in that building.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, is there anyone online that would like to speak in favor? Oh, someone else?
Are you, are you speaking in favor?
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that.
I do not see anyone additional from the audience or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
All right, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I ask that you state your name and address for the record, please.
Karen. Ten-six Marine Street in Miami Village, and I appreciate the time allowed to speak about the proposed special use exception. I didn't get this gentleman's name who said that there are several retails there. There are not. There is one heating and air conditioning warehouse across the street, but there is no other retail. It's all residential right in that area. Since moving to Miami Village, I've been active in the Miami Village Neighborhood Association. We have discussed in our monthly meetings how it would be great to have more businesses come into our neighborhood to enhance it. I support that idea. Regarding the sandwich shop, I have mixed feelings. On the one hand, it's great to see that building used for something. It sat vacant for many years, except for a couple of years ago when the current owner allowed the hood rat riders to make it to their, into their clubhouse. That did not go over well, as the other gentleman said. On the other hand, the building is rundown, dilapidated, and without major professional renovation, probably needs to be torn down and something new built there. At one point, it was condemned by code enforcement some years ago, and I don't know how it got off the condemnation list, but it was. For example, rebuild on the front half of that property facing Lear, using the back half for parking to put in a Portage Township trustee satellite office or a United Way satellite office. Those would be great uses. The opening of a sandwich shop at that location brings concerns for the neighbors. The first is parking. There is no parking at this building except on the Calvert Street side of the building. On the Lear side is all residential except across the street at Ernst Burger's. Every house has one or two parking spaces. This means that people visiting the sandwich shop are going to park where residents would be parking, and then where are the residents supposed to park? Or maybe the sandwich shop patrons will just stop in the middle of the street and run in to pick up something and then be blocking the street. That's not really a good option either. Lear is already difficult to drive on, drive down with parking on both sides of the street. It becomes a one-lane street. The other concerns are foot traffic in the neighborhood and trash. When MVNA does our neighborhood cleanups, the amount of trash we collect in just a few block area is unbelievable. Usually, between the four or six of us that do a several block area, we get at least twelve bags of trash. Especially along Calvert, people seem to think it's easy to throw their trash out the window while they're driving through. It would be so easy for someone walking out of the restaurant and down the street to their car to just throw the trash down, or while they're driving out of the neighborhood to just throw it out the window. This increased foot and vehicle traffic, oh, I'm sorry. This increased foot and vehicle traffic will exacerbate the trash problem that already exists. There is a great property right down the street at fourteen-twenty-eight East Calvert, right across from Lincoln Primary. It's already zone commercial. There's off-street parking and not as many neighbors right there who would be bothered by the foot traffic and noise generated by the restaurant. That property is in line with some other businesses in the same block area, and at one time was a Domino's Pizza business. Perhaps the owner of the proposed sandwich shop could investigate purchasing that property, which currently appears to be vacant. As I mentioned, Miami Village Neighborhood Association is desirous of businesses coming into the neighborhood and desirous, desirous of well-thought-out plans for those businesses. This particular one doesn't seem well-thought-out or advantageous for the neighborhood. For these reasons, I'm asking you not to support the special use exception for this location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Clerk Toronto, is anyone else, or is there a response from? Anyone else speaking in opposition? Or are you speaking in favor or opposition?
I was actually gonna speak in favor.
Okay.
Is that fine?
We, we've already done that part?
Yeah.
But if you can, okay.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you very much. So, my name is Octavia Ray. I am not a resident in that neighborhood, but I, at one point in time, I did live in that residential neighborhood. I am very familiar with it. I am also recognized as an incremental developer with the city of South Bend. Any old establishments that can be brought up to date, that can be renovated for business purposes is always known for it to be a great investment in the community because if it was to be torn down and then big-time developers come in, they would take away from the money that would be brought back into the community that can be utilized and, and that can be utilized in the community again. So, I oppose what was just presented, if that helps any. But we want to keep our town a small town. When we allow different buildings to be torn down and other people to come in, it just, it takes away from the family structure. The, a lot of those areas there, they have mom and pop shops. So, that is what that community is known for. Just my knowledge as being an incremental developer, that would be a terrible idea to tear down because if we're already complaining about trash, if it's an empty field, what else is gonna be there? It's gonna be more trash. That's gonna have to be picked up, and then we'll probably have to get volunteer committees to go and pick it up. So, I just wanted to throw that out there because of my knowledge with being an incremental developer and recognized in the city of South Bend.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, can you state your address, please, for the record?
My address is thirteen-fourteen Mishawaka Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-five. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Clerk Toronto, is anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone online or in person wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay. At this point, the public portion of this bill is now closed.
Here's rebuttal.
Did you have a rebuttal?
Yeah. I wanted, Skip Morrell, zoning specialist with offices on the fourteenth floor. I just wanted to clarify one point that I wasn't clear on before is that, in that, in that highlighted node there, there is one active business, but these buildings are all designed to be kind of that small-scale neighborhood retail space. They're also zoned to allow for those, those kinds of uses. And then on the parking, staff did consider this, and we looked at first that this is a, a very small space. It's gonna be a thousand square feet roughly. So, it'll be pretty neighborhood scale. A lot of the patrons projected would be people walking, biking, sort of, sort of that smaller neighborhood scale. There is public parking available in that surrounding area, and we have had in other situations where, especially with these small-scale sort of neighborhood nodes, where there is concern about parking, there are opportunities to use sort of some kind of parking restrictions. So, that could be form of saying, like a sign that says, like, only residents are allowed to park in a certain area. So, so there are, there are options there as well if that is a concern.
All right.
Thank you.
President McBride had a question first, then I'll go down line.
Thank you. Those are some of the questions I was gonna ask. I know also being the council rep for Mishawaka Avenue, there are a lot of small businesses, and some of the parking have been addressed by putting for residents only, that it wouldn't impede on the homeowner's parking and also designated. I know like on Miami Street, there's a couple designated spots to park as well. So, my concern would be the parking and making sure that there was a few designated for the restaurant area for people to come in and not parking in the middle of the street, and then also making sure the homeowners had a place to park. So, and I know it's in between Miami and Twickenham because I patron both places, but I think that, and I am a part of the Miami Neighbor Association. I haven't talked to them in a, in a few months, but I know that they do encourage businesses, and definitely I hear your concern with that as well. But thank you for answering those questions.
Okay, Housewoman Thomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Morrell, I think you answered my question, but just to clarify, the property across the street from it is a commercial property, and what kind?
Correct. I believe that's an air conditioning.
What the woman had mentioned, air and cooling?
Right.
And the parking that they utilize is street parking?
It's my understanding they have parking in the rear, but they might also utilize street parking. I could look more into that.
And then, secondly, I just, um, just so we could hear, this is an special, this is a special exception use. And so, it, if the property should, should switch hands and a new owner would want to resume a restaurant, it would still need to come back to the council. Is that correct?
The special exception would travel with the property.
Okay.
Right, so not with donor.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Davis.
Thank you. Given the fact that, the reason we had no recommendation this afternoon because we didn't have a, a petition wasn't there, and I would like to ask the petitioner a question, please. Good afternoon, good evening. I would like to know, what was your outreach to the neighborhood regarding your desire to put a business there? The neighbors that are immediately there and to the Miami Hills Neighborhood Association, did you go to their meetings? Did you talk to them? And what was their feedback, and then what was the comments of the immediate neighbors that lived by?
No, I didn't go to any of their meetings, but I talked to a lot of neighbors, and they all want me to come. Everyone I talked to on the blocks, they all.
How far down did you go in the block?
Both sides, both ends, two, two blocks each way.
Two blocks each way?
Yeah.
Do you know if they came or gave any support letters to when you went to their?
They said if I need them, they would come, they would come.
Okay.
I didn't know I had to be here today. I was doing my yard work, and I, I got a call to come.
Oh, okay, because I, I, that would have come through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm glad you shared that because I like the idea of the whole thing there. But also, as a person who's covering that district too, I make sure that everybody has taken the time to talk to their neighbors before I can support that. And also, you haven't, are you aware of the Neighborhood Association meetings there, or were you aware of all of that at all?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was a good question. So, I know that McKnight, she lives like three houses off of that block. So, that would be a good thing to speak with him, but I don't know what, what the city did as far as reach out as well because I know that there's typically some perimeter that they have to go out to. So, if you could answer to that point.
Right, so any, any petition that comes before the Board of Zoning Appeals, there's a three-hundred-foot radius and a letter is sent to each one of those property owners to let them know what the special exception will be and provide any additional information, whether that's like site plans or any, anything like that. So, they, they would have been made aware of the, of the project when it came to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
I agree that they are aware of it, but, and sometimes when you look at city language, and he, our petitioner did share that he has gone to that. I would feel a lot more comfortable voting in favor of it if we had some neighbors in that, next to it that also could confirm that. That's, that's just my, I was concerned this afternoon at our meeting that he wasn't there, and he was, seemed to not know that he was supposed to be there, and so we could have even advised him about that. It would be very helpful to me, I mean, you have a representative for the neighborhood associations, which I do respect, and also I respect having a new business in the area. But it would be nice to have, taking the time to go to the neighborhood association or to have some neighbors to come up with you from that standpoint. It just makes it easier to have. I appreciate Mr. Davis, who has a house in the area. That was good to see. But I just think that you already have talked to the people. It'd be good to have them on the record to go along with that. And I would see no reason why we can't have that at our next meeting, given the fact that we didn't have a meeting this afternoon.
I will, I, I will now entertain a motion regarding this bill. Oh, Sarah, yes.
Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry. Dr. Bolden Simpson, Dr. Bolden Simpson.
That's nice, thank you. Oh, I, I think I might have missed this part, but was the, um, the person that was speaking kind of against, I think she's with the, the Neighborhood Association, is she an officer? And was she speaking in official capacity of the Neighbor Association?
Yes.
Yes.
And I know that because I'm a part of it, so you don't have to come back up.
All right, thank you.
And also, she lives three houses off the block, so I know her concern, something like that, somebody.
And that was, and that's the basis of my concern, like what Ms. Bolden Simpson had. I respect the presidents of neighborhood associations, but I also respect the businesses, and I just wish that that would have been worked out somewhat before. And we, I didn't even know how to advise you because I didn't know about the conflict until tonight. And so, that, I, I, I think that it can be, some, some of these can just be done in the communication and just talking so that, you know, we don't even have to be around. They can clear some things up, and then they can come back. I just think that would be appropriate.
Well, I think to some point you have, like the motorcycle club, it didn't come. Some of the, the businesses can come and at their discretion and as a courtesy come and speak to some of the people. And, and I know it's definitely a, a better welcome than what it was and, and working with the city more so than the shootings that used to go on and the riffraff over in that other, at the other location. But.
If, 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 I, I'd just like to say, if the concern is, you know, trash and all of that, then I would hope that the petitioner would work very hard to make sure that he's a good neighbor and that trash wouldn't be anywhere around and that the interaction with the neighborhood would be that, that you would, you know, make sure that the neighbors know who you are and, and that you're planning to be a good neighbor in the area. I think, I think that's important, and I think that, uh, I think that, that, you know, that's a big concern of neighbors. You know, just reassuring people that you'll make sure the trash is picked up and things are gonna be kept up and that it won't be a conflict with parking and all of that. Doc, Dr. White, I am, everybody is a doctor today.
Don't put that on me. At this point, I would just like to say that it's not unusual if someone is in the neighborhood and they may not be aware of the various neighborhood associations and how to become engaged. And when we talk about trash and things of that nature, it's in all of our neighborhoods. And I think that just listening to some of the comments, I would hope that the petitioner, one, has heard a lot of the concerns in regards to the business, but most importantly, to reach out to those various neighborhood associations. If you need a list, we can provide that for you so that you can become more engaged and you can share, you know, your business, but also your commitment. You have lived in this area for how long? How many years? Thirty?
Thirty years.
You said thirty years. Okay. And so again, you've um you have indicated your commit, your commitment to the neighborhood because you have remained in the neighborhood and has had some transitions as well. So hopefully, based on what you've heard from some of the council members and also the representative from the Neighborhood Association, um I would encourage you to make contact with them, schedule a time to have a conversation and share your vision of the business that you would like to bring in that community. But I do appreciate your efforts.
Question, um for Ms. White, should that happen prior to we voting on it? Or do you feel that we should delay um and then meet before? Or what's your thoughts?
I don't have any problems voting on it at this point because, one, he's been in the community for thirty years. There should be some type of um historical, you know, background in regards to uh what he's done in the community. And again, it's not unusual for individuals not knowing, you know, the various associations. And so what I'm suggesting is for that he would reach out to the president or the whatever capacity she may be serving in terms of that neighborhood association, schedule time, have a conversation and talk about the issues that he's heard and give the level of assurance that he, you know, he has heard and he will move forward in a very positive way.
All right. With that being said, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-nine dash twenty-four.
Can I say something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I know.
Yes, ma'am.
You're so busy down there with the doctors. To the petitioner, I would like to um ask you to get involved with the Neighborhood Association. And I would also like for you to make sure that you try to run a good, clean business. Because with that motorcycle club being there, it's already got a bad, it's bad already. So I'm asking you to go and run your business and enjoy it and work with your neighborhood to make sure that you can do what you can to hold an upstanding business. Okay? Okay. That's that's even better.
All right. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion um in support of Bill twenty-nine dash twenty-four.
There's been a motion in a second. Uh second, Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Dr. Davis.
With the understanding that they're going to work out things with the Neighborhood Association, I vote aye.
Is that a nay?
I said aye, with that understanding.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Bill twenty-nine twenty-four will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh Clerk Toronto, please give Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four a second reading.
Public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, the first north south alley north of Marion Street, east of Lafayette Boulevard and west of Main Street and the portion of Main Street located between the north line of the first east west alley north of Marion, east of Maine and the vacated Navarre Street.
All right. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Public Works and Property Vacation heard Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four and we sent it to Committee of the Whole with favorable recommendation.
Petitioner is present. We asked that you state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon or good evening at this point. Angela Smith, Dan Charner Associates offices located at sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive. We're here on behalf of Beacon Memorial Hospital to seek a vacation of the two areas highlighted here in red. The majority of the block in terms of the alleys have already been vacated. This is sort of the last little strip left. Any of the properties that bought this alley uh already have direct access to an improved public street, uh making this alley less necessary and critical in the development of uh the employee parking that is proposed for this lot as part of the um lifestyle district that is going on downtown that we're very excited about. The section of Main Street that we're looking at is north of the east-west alley there from our main. So that east-west alley serves as an exit from the parking garage as well as access from our main. But the area north of that actually dead ends into what used to be a street. Um Navarre looks like it exists, but it hasn't existed for quite some time. Uh this kind of would close it off. It would allow for the hospital to address some concerns they have had with circulation into the emergency room. Um and they are proposing to do some pedestrian-friendly uh traffic calming through here. And having those two segments to work together gives them the flexibility to do that without um having to coordinate too much. We are working with the City of South Bend to do those improvements. So we are taking all of the traffic safety concerns into consideration. And there will be a turnaround access that will allow people to to exit back to the south on main if they go the wrong direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions and here to ask for your support.
House members, do you have any questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Uh Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four online or in the chambers?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to um for Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four in person or online?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four is now closed. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four.
I move to send Bill that uh thirty-two dash twenty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second, there's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan. I'm sorry, Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Um at this point, uh uh Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
Some move.
It's been seconded and moved. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll. Oh, I can do. Oh, those in favor say aye. I thought because she's online.
I did too.
Okay.
You're correct.
Say what?
You're correct. You are correct.
Oh. Oh, Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Motion carries.
The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill twenty-nine twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at eight thirty Lear Street, Councilman District number three in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill twenty-nine twenty-four?
Yes, Bill twenty-nine twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-nine twenty-four.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Uh I'm gonna say aye with the correction of um eighteen thirty. You said eight thirty.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill twenty-nine twenty-four has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill thirty-two twenty-four a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, the first south, the first north south alley north of Marion Street, east of Lafayette Boulevard and west of Main Street and the portion of the Main Street located between the north line of the first, what, the first east west alley north of Marion, east of Maine and the vacated Navarre Street.
Thank you. Counselor Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill thirty-two twenty-four?
Yes, Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four was heard in the Committee of the Whole and comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-two twenty-four.
Move for the passage of Bill thirty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill thirty-two twenty-four has been adopted. At this time, we will go to bills on first reading. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill thirty-three twenty-four a reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing a direct loan to the developer of an economic development facility, Lincoln Park Project, and approving other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill thirty-three twenty-four to Community Investment for a third reading and public hearing on July twenty-second.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill thirty-four twenty-four a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing a direct loan to the developer of an economic development facility, Southeast Neighborhood Project, and approving other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill thirty-three twenty, thirty-four twenty-four to Community Investment for public hearing and third reading for July twenty-second.
So move.
It's been moved in second. Clerk Toronto, the roll, please.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. At this time, uh council, is there any unfinished business? If not, we'll move to new business. Council.
Yes.
Dr. Davis.
Um I had a person that called me today that wanted to um make sure that we enforce the fireworks um laws of the city. I told the gentleman, I understand, because they were still going off last night. And um I told him I would bring it up and have a discussion tonight. Um not tonight, but I thought that um we at least need to um highlight that again as we go into times when we use fireworks and so as a city. Um and I don't know all the stipulations of that, but I do know that there are some fireworks laws. And so what we can do about that and health and public safety, I would refer that to that committee and then talk about that. And then lastly, um we are, there, Councilwoman Thomas Morgan and Councilwoman Sheila Nagoski and I attended the La Cason meeting a few weeks ago to meet with people who are working on their citizenship to become citizens of the United States. And we are, gave a summary of the council and our roles in the council, and I thought it was an excellent presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, we will turn to the privilege of the floor. Individuals who wish to adjust the council must state their name and residence address in your three minutes. Maximum time limit for this portion shall be thirty minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to adjust topics in which the council has heard previously tonight on the agenda. The president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and or the clerk's office to contact a member of administration for review and topics assigned to them. At this time, please state your name and address.
Jesse Davis, P O Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. So I brought a video that I wanted the council to see, which is a video from last weekend. And it's about the topic that we've discussed here many times. Uh the neighborhood and what we have to put up with over across the street and in the neighborhood where Frank's Place is. There's been numerous shootings. I've been up here and spoke about this when Tim Scott was our councilman. And it just seems to get ignored. And this weekend, it was just crazy. You couldn't drive up Portage, you couldn't drive down Marion. And there was an article put out on the newsbreak dot com, one arrested after South Bend police respond to multiple fights, Linden Grill and Frank's Place, one person arrested at Frank's Place, unclear whether the fights involve the same groups of people or not. Frank's Place has been a big problem for many, many years. I've came here to the council, other people have talked about it. So this time I brought you some actual live video of last weekend. I also brought you the dispatch. All units, please respond to Frank's Place. So we've got every police officer on duty at that time, after midnight, responding over here to try and, you know, clear the roads and police Frank's Place parking lot and all that, while the rest of our city is vulnerable. This place is a nuisance. There's been more than one person killed there. There's been numerous shootings. There was just two shooting incidents within the last couple of weeks, one shooting, shots fired outdoors, and one inside the building. I heard rumors that there was an ambulance stolen at that time during that shooter incident and all kinds of things. I haven't verified that. I believe, without having the documents yet, because I do plan to put a FOIA, but I'm pretty sure it's accurate to say there's been about a hundred calls to Frank's Place this year. Why aren't they on the nuisance list? Why do we pass these ordinances, the nuisance ordinance? Why do we have noise ordinances when nothing's enforced? This place is a nuisance. I went to the licensing hearing. I asked that they be shut down. I own a property right there. I can't keep tenants there. Because guess what? When they hear gunfire, these people are rushing to throw their kids in a bathtub to keep them safe. And this is an every weekend event and even during the week. Um I have a flash drive. I don't know if you guys can download it. There's three folders in there from three recent days, or nights, I should say. And within each folder is a short video of the surrounding neighborhood there. And you can hear how noisy and you can physically see what goes on there. And there's also photographs. So if you can download that quickly, you can have a copy of that. I have the dispatch and this other paper I'd like to leave with you. And just so you know, I will be interviewing with the news and I'll be providing them with all these videos as well, because I'm tired of coming here and making complaints and nothing gets done. Nothing gets done.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh St. Castle, four oh two two Kennedy Drive. I'm bringing to your attention the public's irresponsible spending that needs to be brought under control. According to the city's own monthly report as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, we have the following projected deficits. Sixty-three million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollar deficit in the TIF, all the TIFs combined, thirty-four million, two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars deficit in the general fund. And this is funded by our property taxes. Twenty million... Twenty million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty dollar deficit for the Parks Department. Overall projected deficit, two hundred and fourteen million dollars, two hundred and fourteen, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. These deficits are over and above the massive spending. And where are the April, May, and June reports? It is not responsible to keep covering over this financial hole you are creating by spending down the cash reserves and rubber stamping every budget the administration gives you. Hand it back. Start redlining the gross over spending and do what you were elected to do, which is to be the taxpayer's watchdog for responsible spending and government. Stop being tax and spend council. The annual comprehensive financial report by law is due in June. It is still not available. Last year, it was not available until after the budget was passed. Not only is this not okay, it's not legal. This report needs to be posted now so that the council and public can see the true financial state of South Bend. Do you want your legacy to be bankrupting the City of South Bend? To the public. Budget hearings start in August. They have warned us that we may view them, but not comment. Not comment on how our own tax dollars are being spent. Let the mayor and council know enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brendan Crumlish, local businessman with an office on thirty-two fifteen Sugar Maple Business Court in South Bend. I'm here tonight as the president of Businesses United Four. We are a corporation of over twenty South Bend businesses. We are seeking fairness for the truly homeless in our community, as well as greater fiscal responsibility from our local government. And lastly, fairness and freedom for all media platforms to share and report on the actions of our government. All of this is transparent for the genuine improvement of the City of South Bend. Four weeks ago, I stood before you and noted that only a couple of you had agreed to meet with us to learn about our plans to protect the city from being overrun by more homeless immigrants from surrounding states and communities. And prior to the last meeting, only four of you had met with us individually. Since that last council meeting, Councilman Lee and Councilwoman Nizgotsky have since met with us. We gained valuable feedback from their review of our efforts. And to both Kenneth Lee and Sheila Nizgotsky, I say thank you. Councilwomen McBride, Morgan, and Councilman Warner, you have still yet to meet, to agree to meet with us. We have shared our plans and strategies with each of you by email and U.S. mail. I ask you three to contact me, please, to meet with us one-on-one so we can hear your thoughts, wishes, and concerns in reply. I am confident you will not be disappointed with our plans. Please listen to us as our duly elected officials, and then meet with us, your constituents, so we can hear what you have to say about our plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Foster, eleven thirty-eight College Street. Tonight, I come before the council once again to demand Vice President Sheila Nizgotsky's resignation due to her assault and attempted battery on my husband, Logan Foster, on May thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Logan Foster, eleven thirty-eight College Street. Two weeks ago, I requested that the South Bend Common Council use its authority to investigate a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar overpayment to D L Z Indiana LLC. I stand here today to inquire whether that investigation has commenced. Additionally, on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, following a common council meeting in this very room, Common Council Vice President Sheila Nogoski assaulted me, attempted battery on me, intimidated me, and tried to silence me as a member of the media to stop my investigations. I am calling for Vice President Nogoski to resign from her position. And if she refuses, I urge the Common Council to demand her resignation, publicly censure her, and remove her from her seat on the council. All of these actions are within the council's authority per Section two, ten point one, powers, duties, and procedures of the council's rule, council's rule committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Angela Smith, nine one four East Jefferson. Thought I'd end on a positive note. I wanted to thank the council again for your innovation and forward thinking. As of Tuesday, my in-laws have located to an accessory dwelling unit on our property. They sold their home in Florida and have moved here so that we can care for my father-in-law who has Alzheimer's and for my mother-in-law as she goes through this transition. Everybody that has, they had talked to prior to coming, said this was such an amazing opportunity that they only wish other communities would offer such an opportunity for multi-generational living. We all know it'd be really hard to have them living under our same roof, but we're excited that they're living in our backyard where we can help them, and they can also help us with our children and the care of our home. So thank you again for all you do, and I appreciate that. And on behalf of them, they'd like to thank you as well.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Octavia Ray. I am a resident of thirteen fourteen Mishawaka Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I wanted to come on good news as well. I wanted to actually formally invite every council member here to a back-to-school prayer revival for the youth. So this is the ages of five to eighteen. I noticed some of the previous members that came up are troubled by the violence that is going on in the community and in the city. I think this is a great alternative to be able to put an end and cease it. We know that the word of God says each generation will get wickeder and wickeder, so let's stop that now. Again, this will be August twenty-fourth and also September seventh. Again, I would love to invite every single member out as we will be going into territories and praying for our community and for our city. It's truly up to us.
Where?
Our first location will be at Walker Field, which is off of Ewing, on the south neighbor, south side of the neighborhood, across from Rum Village. Our second location will be at Kennedy Park, and that is on September seventh. Both of these times are at eleven a.m. We'll also be posting this on social media platforms, LinkedIn, Facebook. You'll find it in the libraries. You'll probably find it here in the County City Building. But we want to know that you guys want to come out, participate, and care about what is going on with our future, with our future generations.
All right.
Amen. God bless y'all.
Thank you. Clerk Toronto, do you see anyone online?
Ms. Charlie Pfeiffer, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Ms. Pfeiffer, can you hear to unmute yourself?
She's gone.
It says that she left the chat.
Well, if there's no one else?
Is there any way?
We stand it, I'm sorry.
Is there any way that that schedule could be sent to us? Or what? That you could send us that schedule for what she just said?
Yeah.
Got the case.
Okay.
With that said, this meeting is adjourned. The trash, I forgot. He's on Matthew. Thank you. Thank you.